Welcome to May 26 regularly scheduled City Council meeting. I'll call this meeting to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we get to our citizen comment period, I'd like to take this few minutes to read to you a poem called "The Unknown Soldier." And Roger J., the way I read it, is the author of this, and he wrote this poem in 2003. "You need not ever know my name; this unknown soldier seeks no fame. I'm here to bring out thought from you. May your heart see more than your view. American or America, we march with pride. We gave our life; for you we died. How well we knew the time might come when life could sound that final drum. Please think of us as life moves on; we tried so hard till that last dawn. Do let our spirit fill the land; pass treasured freedoms hand to hand. God bless this country with such love; hold in your heart abundance of. And when you stand before my grave, think not of one, but each who gave." I just, that was a very moving poem, so I thought I'd share it with you. Thank you. All right, this is the portion of the meeting that no one has signed up for, but I always ask for you to raise your hand if you'd like to speak to the council. Has anyone wished to speak at this point? Seeing none, we'll move on then. Counsel, we're at item number three, approval of the agenda.
I'd like to move consent and, I'm sorry, consent agenda item 4C onto the business as business item 7C.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to move business, or I mean consent agenda 4C to business item 7C. Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item is moved. Any other?
I was going to move to approve the agenda as amended.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as amended. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Thank you. We have approved the amended consent agenda. Now we're moving on to the consent agenda.
Approve the consent agenda as amended.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any other corrections or additions? Seeing none, all those in favor approving the amended consent agenda say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Thank you, that motion carries. Okay. Now, I'm especially glad and happy to introduce Kitsap Economic Development Alliance Director, Mr. Powers, and he's going to bring us up to date on what's happening across the county. Thank you.
Good to meet you, Mr. Mayor and Mr. Council. We very appreciate your opportunity to come before the council on a regular basis to update you on the activities of Kitsap Economic Development Alliance, of which the city of Port Orchard is an active member. We have two members on our board from the city, both Councilman Jared Childs and Mayor Ken Mathis, and we very much appreciate your engagement and the financial support that this city provides the alliance. Tonight you have in front of you a written report for activities in the first quarter of this year, January 1st through March 31st, but before getting into some of those specific numbers on the clients assisted and the type of assistance delivered, I wanted to back up for a minute and touch base with you on some of the big picture items that have occurred since I was last in front of this council. First of all, we closed out the year 2014 with our last board meeting here in Port Orchard. It was up at the Kitsap County Administrative Buildings. We had a good turnout. Our board members from Port Orchard were here, and the topic, in addition to routine board business, was a full and rather robust discussion about the upcoming comprehensive plan updates that are being undertaken by the four municipalities in the county as well as the county, and got some good feedback from not just the public partners, but from private sector, which, as you all know, is an economic development component in your comprehensive planning. We want to make sure that we're listening closely to the business community and those that invest in our community and employers in our community as to what their needs might be, whether it be policy, permitting, infrastructure, other elements of setting the table, if you would, a good firm foundation for the economy here in Kitsap. There's a lot of work underway in that regard, both here with your city as well as the others, and our alliance, I think, should be viewed by all of our partners as a resource for you, a strategic partner and resource as you look to make policy decisions, long ranging policy decisions to accommodate growth and the economic activity that will come with that. And then we started the year in Bremerton at the Kitsap Conference Center with our annual economic forecast conference. That was the last week of January, very well attended. There were about 250 in attendance. And this year, again focusing on the comprehensive plan updates that are occurring, we did an instant survey of those that were in the audience, and the results of that survey can be found on our Kitsap Economic Development website if you simply go to query and search and you go to survey, Decision Maker Survey, January. You'll find about a five-page summary of the results. Some of the things that I think are important for city leaders here in Port Orchard and across the county to remember was workforce was a key continuing priority for businesses, making sure that we are providing a good, skilled, educated workforce on a variety of fronts, from technology to advanced manufacturing to medical services, you name it, our community really as communities across the state and the country are fighting to provide the type of workforce that businesses and others need to succeed. Another one that kind of surprised people was the question about where they saw growth in our county, and although our defense-based economy is growing within that defense sector and the shipyard is up to some record levels of employment and more expected, another sector that was called out by those in attendance was the technology sector. And here on our Highway 3 corridor, it mirrors the I-5 corridor to some extent, we have dozens and dozens of technology companies, some aimed at the defense industry, some aimed at the healthcare industry, some aimed at e-commerce. So we have a variety of technology companies here, and the business community is expecting continued growth here in Kitsap as we see growth in that sector across the region. And then a third thing that I thought was interesting, we've talked about it a long time here in Kitsap County, and that is the telecommunications fiber infrastructure on basically moving information in addition to moving goods and people and services through typical transportation corridors. And I know great strides have been made throughout the county in working with the KPUD and others to make sure that we're doing our best to maximize access to high-speed data networks. There's more work to do there, and I think if we stay focused on that over the next decade or so, we'll remain competitive, and that'll be very important. And then following the annual economic forecast conference in January, we had our annual meeting in March. And at the annual meeting, we did two things of note that I know many of you were aware of because you were there that day. We basically disseminated and reviewed the results of all of 2014, our annual report, which again can be found online. There's a couple of things in here I would like to highlight, including the work and the return on investment in our government contracting services. We last year assisted over 200 small businesses in preparing them to do direct contracting work with the Department of Defense or other government entities, and from that, over $50 million in contracts were awarded. One of them in particular we're very proud of is the Olympic College turned out to be one of our PTAC clients last year as they had to bid for their work to retain their 50-year-old apprenticeship program in the shipyards, and we worked, our counselors, with their academic team to make sure that they were properly positioned to not only be recognized for their past service, but to be seen as the most competitive and worthy contractor to move forward with that. And that was competitively bid by community colleges from outside of this market, and we were very pleased that President Mitchell and his team acknowledged the valuable service that we had provided to Olympic College. That ended up being a five-year, $16 million contract that they retained, very important to our community. So that's the type of work that we celebrated last year, and again, if you want the detail about all of the work and casework, it's there in the annual report. In addition, at our annual meeting in March, we approved this year's strategic plan, the 2015 strategic plan for our alliance. It again builds on our strengths: defense, advanced manufacturing, location and proximity to the region that is growing really at historic rates on almost every sector. We see ourselves as an integral part of that regional economy, making contributions into it to strengthen it, as well as leveraging assets throughout the region, workforce, other infrastructure, brand, if you would, and awareness to make sure people know that Kitsap and all it has to offer is part of that opportunity. So we're very pleased with the board adopting this regional strategy for the next year. I'd also point out that we elected officers for the coming year, and as our custom, our officers serve for two-year terms. And Steve Politeikis, the CEO of the Kitsap Bank headquartered right here in Port Orchard, will go into his second year as the Chair of our board. He's followed by Ben Anderson from Art Anderson and Associates Naval Architecture and Bob Geit from Rice Fergus Miller Architecture and Planning. So we've got a strong core of officers, if you would. And then at our most recent board meeting, which was just last week, we elected three new board members. We elected Jay Burkhart, who is the new CEO or President of the Doctors Clinic. Linda Brown had retired a month earlier, and Jay agreed to serve on our board. We were pleased for that. We also elected the board with his permission and really sees as a great way to come to know the community, and that's David Schultz, the new CEO at Harrison Medical Center. His predecessor Scott had been on our board, so we're very pleased that those two gentlemen joined us. And then Dee Coppola here from Port Orchard with the Wed Apple Publishing Company is also joining our board, and we're pleased to have her input as well. So just last week, we had a 24-hour overnight planning session up at the Clearwater Resort, and we heard from the President of Western Washington University, Mr. Bruce Shepherd, about their very ambitious plans for Kitsap County centered around the North Kitsap Campus in Pauls Bow and other programs in the West Sound. And then on Thursday night, we heard from Leonard Forsman, who is the Chair of the Suquamish Tribe, who gave us a great history of the tribe and brought us up to date with their input, if you would, and economic impact on Kitsap's economy, which is immense. By the end of this year, they will have employment base of over 1,000 employees, which will put them in second position to Harrison Medical Center from a largest private employer standpoint. So that's significant. And their employees come from throughout the West Sound and Kitsap. Many of them are members of the tribe and the North Kitsap community, but they really draw not just patrons, but their workforce from throughout the community as well. So all in all, we found it to be a very successful 24-hour period and some patience on it. So now let's turn to the numbers in your report, if I would. We track our work by business retention and expansion, which is work with existing businesses here in Kitsap County, and we also break it out by communities within the county. You'll see on page one that the assistance by location, Bainbridge, Bremerton, Kitsap, Port Orchard, and Pauls Bow, you'll see in the first quarter that we basically worked with 20 companies or 20 opportunities here in Port Orchard. Now that could be in response to an inquiry relative to particular needs, workforce, capital, whatever it might be. It also might be a company from outside the area referred to us by the Washington State Department of Commerce that could be, quote, "an advanced manufacturer." And on that point, what we do is we tee up in response to that request for qualifications or proposal, we tee up for them all the communities that have the assets and the real estate inventory that could basically serve that need, and we see Port Orchard, particularly on the manufacturing side, with some of the things going on here near Business Park and the related environs, as being a critical potential sighting for that type of activity. You'll also see that in information, research, and referrals, we get a lot of calls from businesses, "need to know about this, need to know about that." In the first quarter, we had 98 of those service files open, which is almost half of our annual goal, just in the first half of the year. That signals to me that the economy is stronger and that businesses are more and more contemplating new investments, new hiring, expansion. I think it's a real good barometer for all of us to know that in that first quarter, we're basically fielding what we thought we would field over two quarters. In direct assist to companies, 37 were assisted in the first quarter. That's about 25% of our annual goal of 150. And then on direct visits or presentations to basically outside companies looking for opportunities here, we had 26 of those opportunities, which again is about one quarter of the year in, so kind of on target. The pie chart here shows the type of work from companies assisted to startup assistance to information and research, so you can kind of see color coordinated where we spend our time and the type of cases. And then also turn your attention to page two of that report, and on here we highlight some of the larger activities relative to trade shows. For instance, we were an exhibitor at the Pacific Northwest Aerospace Alliance Aerospace Show in Lindwood in the first quarter. We partnered with the port, Olympic College, and, pardon me, and our Economic Development Alliance. We had a great, great booth. In fact, if you look at the back of our strategic work plan, we basically are laying out the message with the three panels that compose our trade show message, and we're very proud of it, and we're getting good response to it. We also conducted nine government contracting classes in the first quarter. We have a new volunteer on our PTAC team, and she's doing a great job. Mona Carlson is her name, recently retired as a contract administrator from Department of Navy, as was Mary Jo Juarez's background, and between the two of them, they're really doing a great job, meeting with a lot of companies, getting good results, pleased to have their support.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
PTAC, would you tell us what that, to the folks in the audience?
That's a technical term for procurement, Technical Assistance Center. We're one of about six of those centers across Washington State because we have a large government contract base, if you would, defense sector in our economy. It's particularly important to communities like ours. Pierce County is very large as well with their JBLM presence. There's an active chapter over in Spokane with Fairchild. So it's really aimed at communities like Kitsap that have a lot of businesses that can contract with the government.
Thank you.
We call it PTAC because that's what the federal government calls it, and they are a partner in it. They basically provide us 50 cents on the dollar for the time and effort that we contribute with our staff. Last year, we had staff resources tied up in this of about $65,000, and we received reimbursement, if you would, from the federal government on this program for about half of that, about $32,000. So it's a good, strong partnership.
I'll have a comment at the end of your message about that, so.
Absolutely. The other thing I would point out is we have been very active in the Washington Military Alliance, which was stood up just a year ago this time. Just about three weeks ago, we convened a table of defense contractors, not the Navy, but the first-tier defense contractors that are working with the Navy. At that table, we had Raytheon, Lockheed, General Dynamics, Safeboats. We had Jerry Latacier's company from Bremerton. I'm failing to remember the name right now. I think it's called Habitability. They do a lot of refurbishment of the ships on the officer quarters. We had 12. We had ATS at the table. We had Skookum at the table. We had large employers in our company, excuse me, in our county that are very dependent upon work with the government and identifying for us some of the issues, some of the challenges to make sure that it's not just the Navy that we're supporting, but it's the private sector companies that are partnering with the Navy to get the work done. So we're pleased with that work, and we're also involved in the Washington Maritime Federation, which, as you know, if you've been reading the papers right now, is very active in trying to promote the interest of the maritime industry across the board. We do ship repair here in Kitsap and some boat building, particularly at Safeboats, but there's all kinds of dynamics to the maritime industry, including the seaports, the cargo shipping, the ship billing over at Harbor Island, the new matter regarding being perhaps a location to maintain and supply some of the energy platforms that will be deployed in the Arctic waters. So there's a lot going on in that space, and our job in that Washington Maritime Federation is simply tell the story of the industry to policymakers and elected officials so they know what the need is of the industry to continue to succeed, and it accounts for one of the top five industries in our state. And here in Kitsap, when you convert defense NEX code numbers to maritime shipbuilding repair, it is by far and away the largest maritime employer in the shipbuilding and repair sector of that industry of any other community, so it's important to us as well. I think that's it for kind of the highlights in the first quarter. We also have in our report, if you're interested, our kind of interface with the community and the marketplace on our marketing, who's contacting us and how they're contacting us and what type of information they're looking for. And you'll see on page four that we lay out the type of inquiry we receive on the Internet, and these could be companies we never talk to directly, but they come onto our website and they download information. And you'll see at the bottom of the top page downloads that our government assistance or PTAC program is by far and away the largest information accessed on our website. So with that, I would be happy to answer any questions that the mayor of the council might have. I also want to point out that we want to be in front of you on the right frequency, the right routine, whether that be quarterly or semi-annually, whatever works for this body, we're here to spend time with you, and you are always welcome to attend our board meetings, which are convened on a quarterly basis.
Well, my comment was, there's several small businesses here, and I would, I kind of told them about the Government Contracting Essentials program, and I don't know if they've pulled the trigger, so to speak, and came to one of those, but their chronic complaint is it's too much red tape. And that's why I appreciate you trying to at least press down some of that red tape so they're not afraid to try, because there is a lot of red tape, but you, once you know how to navigate it, it's not as bad as it might seem. And so I appreciate that they have at least some resource in the county to help navigate that red tape.
PTAC officers, Mary Jo and Mona and Kathy Kokas, they know and understand what the other side of the party of the transaction is looking for, and that's critically important anytime you go in to first qualify yourself, are you qualified, have you provided the right information? And then to not just earn the bid or award, but perform on it, that's critically important. And in the performance, there's a lot of activity as well that we can assist companies on. When we have these meetings in our office, we have on average about 18 companies that come in. Tomorrow, we have one set up, begins at 9:00, and this is from the prime contractor in the Delta Pier up at Bangor, Nova Industries, and their chief contract officer will be there, and we have 18 companies signed up to basically receive assistance on it. So it's the real deal, and we're pleased to be able to provide the service.
It's a resource all of our council folks here could have in their back pocket when they talk to a business, and then all they need to do at that point is just introduce you to that business, and then hopefully it'll get somewhere then.
There you go. Thank you, Mayor.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Yes, Mr. Chang.
Do you happen to know what percentage of your contacts are generated through social media, maybe compared to the website or the press releases?
You know, I don't have that answer for you, Fred. I can get it. Kathy follows that very closely. I'm not sure it's that granular in this report, but I'd be happy to try and...
No, it seems like you have healthy numbers for something that's non-consumer-related, and I just didn't know if that was considered successful compared to the other channels.
I think the amount of contacts we've had over the last two years can be attributed to two things: an increase in economic conditions and improvement, more people exploring new opportunities as opposed to just holding on, weathering the storm, and two, the ease of access and the depth of the information you can now access on our website, I think, is drawing more people to it. But I can answer the question as far as how it compares and contrasts to other avenues in.
Thank you.
Question?
Well, I just have a comment. I thought it was an excellent retreat, John, and a lot of exchange of information. I especially enjoyed having an exchange with Dr. Shepherd about Pauls Bow's revelation that they notified Western Washington, they had a space forum up at the campus, Olympic Campus up there, and Pauls Bow, of course, Olympic, and that I was able to tell Dr. Shepherd that we have space in Port Orchard as well on the waterfront and suggest that they locate a marine science center here on our waterfront next to the boat ramp with the state's largest high school and close proximity to Safeboats and another manufacturing and design firm as Yachtfish. And I got somewhere, and then at Stern, we spent the next four hours bantering back and forth who was going to get the marine science center, so. We planted the seed, though, and Western Washington would be a perfect fit for us down here in Port Orchard.
Planting the seed, let me just comment on that because sometimes that's underestimated. Well, just planted the idea, planted the seed. If you look at the reason, or one of the reasons, that Olympic College expanded, if you would, with the second campus into North Kitsap and in Pauls Bow, I think it was 12 or 13 years ago that through rotary efforts initially, it was like, hey, we want to make room for you up here. They were developing the Ohava area, and they had some land, and they're trying to put the piece together, and at first people thought it was a real long shot. It was like, come on, it's not going to happen. But planted the seed, they stayed with it, they've been really promoting it ever since, and I think that's coming to fruition. Now, I think Western Washington University's presence in our community is going to be very wide. They call it Western on the peninsula. They're looking to serve three counties here, all three counties, Jefferson, Clallum, and Kitsap in their service, and that includes Port Orchard, includes South Kitsap as well as North Kitsap. So I think we'll all benefit from it, but the reason I make the comment is, whether it be this community of Port Orchard or another community, when the community leaders start to plant, you know, those seeds and create that vision and build community support behind it, whether it be in a Rotary Club basis or Chamber basis or whatever it is, good things can happen over time. They don't flip overnight, but you stay with it, stay with it, stay with it, pretty soon there's a shovel being turned in the ground. And so I think there's a, that's something to admire and it's something to build from or build on.
With 15,000 students, they're not a small player.
No.
They're a big university.
And they have a great reputation. It's a great opportunity for all of us.
Anything else, counsel?
Thank you.
Thank you so much for being here.
You're welcome.
And I think our schedule, unless I hear differently from the council, quarterly seems to work for us if it works for you.
It works for us just right.
And then also keep in mind that if there's a conflict, we could move it slightly.
Thank you, Mayor.
I mean, it's not in concrete, so. Thank you so much for being here, Mr. Powers. Appreciate it. All right, we'll move on to the public hearing, Waste Management of Washington Contract, Solid Waste Services. Clerk Reinsen, you want to lead us into this one, please?
The collection, removal, and disposal of garbage in refuse compulsory and universal. The current contract for solid waste services is with Waste Management of Washington, Inc., and is set to expire June 30, 2015. Staff has been working with Waste Management on a renewal contract for solid waste services. Waste Management is proposing a contract for five years with an option to extend the agreement for up to two extensions, the first extension being for four years, excuse me, for three years, and the second extension for two years. The proposed contract does not change any of the existing services, but does update the following: the Utility Trade Commission, which is the UTC tariff number from 19 to 20, some definitions, they changed the language where it stated "garbage, refuse, and other waste" to just "solid waste," updated description of collection due to weather section, service to city facilities, insurance and identification provisions, cart/can collection, recyclable collection, default annexations, and I'm going to try and attempt to pronounce this, force manure, natural disasters, basically. At the April 21, 2015 City Council Work Study Session, staff was directed to schedule a public hearing to receive public comments prior to considering the contract with Waste Management. Staff is still finalizing the contract and will present it at the June 9, 2015 City Council Meeting for consideration. Council meeting for consideration. And there is a redlined version of what Waste Management has been provided to us as part of their proposal, and staff recommends opening the public hearing.
All right, hereby open the public hearing. No one has signed up to testify for the public hearing. Once again, I would like to offer anybody in the office or in the audience an opportunity, raise your hand, please come up and give us your comments.
I know that the last time this came up, and I brought up the same issue, but I think there's a lot in our recycle bin that could be added. And the number one thing, I think, for those of us that shop at Costco, are the plastic containers that we bring our fruit home in, nearly everything. And those are not really recyclable in our system right now. And the man said that it wasn't economically feasible. But other communities are recycling them in their communities, and I would sure like to see that added to our recycle bins. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Last chance, seeing, nope, all right. Hereby close the public hearing. Clerk Reinsen, so then we're going to be putting this on the consent agenda for next?
It's up to the council. I can put it on consent or bring it back as a business item for council discussion.
Does anybody have any more comments, questions for tonight?
I would prefer it to be on the business item, just to give an opportunity for input.
Okay. Mr. Chang.
I'm a little curious about pages 33 and 34 that basically lists the city facilities. It's, I don't know if I would call it complete. It lists, for example, the recycling bin by the library, but none of the recycling on Bay Street, which has been provided, I believe, complimentary. Are they not considered city facilities if they're on Bay Street, or? I mean, they're not listed here. Should they be, or? I mean, there are some at some of the corners on Bay Street, and I just didn't know if they should be on the city facilities list.
Yeah, the previous contract didn't have a list of our facilities, so we're trying to streamline that process, and we probably just didn't recognize that it was left off, so we'll make sure it's on there.
So you, Clerk Reinsen, you'll go through and make sure that it's accurate to the best of our ability where the recycle bins are and stuff?
Yes.
Okay.
And then also, we will make sure it's on a business item, just because it is a franchise agreement, and it requires an ordinance, and also there's a different voting structure when voting on franchise agreements, so we will make sure it's on the business item.
Oh, that's right, right. Mr. Darcy, I don't think your mic's turned on yet, because I was having trouble hearing you. Okay. Is there any other discussion for tonight? Okay, let's move on then to business items. 7B, adoption of resolution to ratify amendments to the countywide planning policy. Mr. Bond, could you lead us into that, please?
I think you skipped one.
Oh. Sorry, sorry, yes, I'm sorry. 7A, adoption of resolution granting final plat approval for Frederick's Landing. Mr. Bond, could you tell us about that one?
Member of the council. Frederick's Landing, previously known as the Williams Plat, was granted preliminary approval by the Port Orchard Hearing Examiner on August 11th, 2008, to subdivide 2.71 acres into 18 single-family lots on property located on the east side of Sidney Avenue, approximately 700 feet south of the Sidney Avenue-Goldenrod Street intersection in Port Orchard, Washington. This preliminary plat application has not yet expired because the Washington State Legislature recently amended state law to extend preliminary plat approval for a period of seven years if the date of preliminary plat approval is on or before December 31st, 2014. The new plat owner subsequently requested a minor amendment to the approved preliminary plat, making minor changes to the interior lot configuration and tract configuration. The city approved this minor plat amendment on May 8th, 2015. This minor plat amendment is not yet final because it is still subject to an appeal period until May 29th, 2015. On March 31st, 2015, the owner of the preliminary plat applied for final plat approval. Pursuant to RCW 5817170, in order to approve the final plat, the city council must make written findings that the subdivision conforms to all terms of the preliminary plat approval, that the subdivision meets the requirements of Chapter 5817 RCW, and that the subdivision meets the requirements of all, of other applicable laws, including the city's subdivision ordinance as it existed when the preliminary plat was approved. Staff has reviewed the Frederick's Landing final plat application and has determined that the application meets all of the above conditions outlined in the staff report. The only exception are the preliminary plat condition numbers 3, 5, 6, and 7, which require that street trees be planted or bonded prior to final plat approval. Pursuant to RCW 5817130, the developer may propose to bond or sign a cash set aside agreement with the city in lieu of actual construction or completion. Here, the developer has posted a performance cash set aside for this purpose, which is attached. Staff recommends adoption of a resolution granting final plat approval of the Frederick's Landing subdivision for the reasons set forth in the staff report. Because the minor plat amendment will not be final until May 29th, 2015, the council should either postpone action until after that date, or make a motion that will not be effective until after May 29th, 2015, provided that no appeal of the minor plat amendment is filed.
All right, thank you. Counsel, what's your pleasure on this? Have any, yes, Mr. Patance?
I move the council finds that the preliminary plat of Frederick's Landing subdivision conforms to all the terms of the preliminary plat approval, and the subdivision meets the requirements of Chapter 58.17 RCW, and the subdivision meets the requirements of all applicable laws and is required by the Hearing Examiner's decision, including the city's subdivision ordinance as it exists when the preliminary plat was approved. If no appeal is filed by May 29th, 2015, the council authorizes the mayor to inscribe the final plat of Frederick's Landing as approved. If an appeal is filed on or before May 29th, 2015, then this motion shall be invalid and have no effect.
All right, thank you.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Open the floor for discussion.
I just want to clarify what staff means in the summary. It says, the applicant has met all the above conditions, and then it says exceptions are the preliminary plot conditions on numbers 3, 5, 6, and 7. And then in the motion, it says, finds that the plot landing subdivision conforms to all terms of the preliminary plat approval. This kind of feels like there's, we're saying it is approved, then there's exceptions, and then it meets all the terms. I mean, it's just, is there something there I'm not seeing?
The, where it talks about the above conditions, those are the three bullet points in the background section that have to do with state law. And then it's explained that because they provided a cash set aside, they have met conditions 3, 5, 6, and 7, but they've done it through an alternative method than what is described in the preliminary plat approval. So they're consistent with all of the laws because they provided the cash set aside, which was in your packet, and that's the finding that was made.
Yes. Ms. Ashby?
I just wanted to ask our attorney that she has reviewed this, because we are saying that we're in compliance with Chapter 58.17 RCW. And I want to confirm that, because I have not verified that we are in fact complying with that.
Well, the developer is required to comply with it, and from the materials in the file and the conditions of plat approval, I reviewed it, and I determined that it is consistent with Chapter 5817. And to answer the other question that was asked, a developer can post a bond or a cash set aside in lieu of construction in order to get final plat approval. And that's what was done here. If you'd like to change the motion to say compliance with these conditions was achieved through the posting of a performance cash set aside, we can do that as well. But he has met the plat conditions as long as he's posting this performance cash set aside.
Other questions? Yes, Mr. Clark, right.
Nick, I had a question on number eight on page two. One of the 40 that says this condition cannot be satisfied at final plat. And I'm wondering if you can kind of fill me in on the background on this particular one.
Well, it's a condition that refers to what's going to happen at the time of building permit issuance. And so as part of the final plat, you're not meeting the bulk zoning requirements, you're going to meet those at the time that you build the house. And so those are binding, because we have those standards adopted. But the final plat itself, there's no construction that you're approving at this point in time. You're just recording to the lot numbers and actually creating the lots.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, discussion?
I have, this is directed to Mr. Darcy. And if you could explain to me one more time what half-street improvements are? Because one of the conditions was half-street improvement shall be required as approved by the Public Works Director.
Right, that has to do with, I think the exact language was half-street improvements at the entry.
Yes.
So in essence, they constructed the, their entrance at the throat of their development with those improvements on the east half of Sidney. And that constituted compliance with that condition.
There was also a no protest agreement as part of the covenants that agreed not to protest the formation of each area.
There was, if there's an LID, correct.
Exactly, yeah.
I just have a general question for Nick. Is this area zoned R8, R16, and did they get the maximum lots out of the zoning?
I think they could have gotten more lots out of this. They did apply for and were granted a rezone around the time of preliminary plat approval. And so I think, going from memory, I think they went to an R12, but 18 units on 2.71 is less than 12 units.
R6 or something. I'm always interested in circulation, and so at what point do we get the fire department to buy off that?
They already have.
They already have.
It was in our survey.
Okay. I was looking for a letter.
Oh.
But...
I don't know, it just...
Well, they, to get to this point with the summary conditions, they've already provided their memos and their signups.
Okay, we may not have seen that letter, okay. Yeah, I'm just not crazy when they have these designs where it's not even a cul-de-sac, but it looks like you go in and then you back out. I guess you call them hammerheads.
It's a hammerhead.
Yeah. But I guess we allow that.
That was approved, I think, by variance at one point in time.
It was a variance approved as part of the preliminary plat. And, you know, this is a very short public street that has a private street off it, so this is fairly typical.
So we're not liable for maintaining the private street? That's sort of like their driveway to like three of the lots?
Right, it's, I think it's accessing three lots.
Okay.
Yeah, the CCNRs in the plat make it very clear that the maintenance of the private road is in the homeowners association.
Thank you.
Okay, any other, yes?
Well, just one of my issues with this entire neighborhood is, it's my personal opinion that a disservice was done to this neighborhood over the last, I'm going to say since about 2000, in that a lot of small developments like this were allowed to go in off of South Flower and various places. And it's had quite an impact on the traffic up there. And I was up there today, and once you go south of Lippert, Sidney, the road condition is not as good as it is north of Lippert. And I wondered, in my mind, how much traffic this was going to generate. And I know that they have a no protest for an LID in the future, and I know that there are other parcels up there that can hold probably similar developments. And I just, I just have concerns for the neighborhood.
Well, I guess I can answer that generically. The city approved a number of contiguous short plats, plats that had, you know, limited improvement through a specific developer over years. And the legislature, through the granting of from five to seven to nine-year extensions, has just allowed these to be picked up as they've gone into foreclosure. Now, the city has changed their short plat ordinance that no longer allows contiguous short planting. That was something that we did in 2009, I believe, and that curtailed some of this. But to some degree, this is simply moving previous approvals through the, wouldn't necessarily be approved today, because the city's working to improve the code. But yes, you're exactly right.
I could speak to that. When I first got on the council, that was a problem, most contiguous plats. And that's, the short plats, and it's really, it was a poor development model.
And I was on the planning commission, and there was nothing we could do about it.
Yeah. And since we've changed our regulations to not allow that, which I believe is a good thing, because that's very poor planning and poor development, and we're all suffering because of it.
Any other comments, questions, discussion? All right then, we'll be voting on adoption of resolution granting final plat approval for Frederick's Landing. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Thank you, that motion carries. Okay, we're going to move on to 7B, adoption of resolution to ratify amendments to the countywide planning policies. Mr. Bond, could you lead us into this one, please?
Yes, thank you. In late 2013, the city council ratified the most recent version of the countywide planning policies. However, in early 2015, Kitsap County discovered a scrivener's error concerning the Silverdale UGA census population. In addition, the county has proposed a shift of 1,000 in population allocation from the central Kitsap UGA, urban growth area, to the Silverdale UGA. Finally, the planning horizon has been shifted from 2035 to 2036 for both population and employment at the recommendation of the Department of Commerce. These changes were shown on the attached county ordinance 522-15, and city staff recommends approval of these minor amendments to the countywide planning policies.
Okay, council, yes?
I move to approve a resolution ratifying the proposed 2015 amendments to the countywide planning policies submitted by the Board of the Kitsap Regional Coordinating Council and approved by the Kitsap County Board of County Commissioners.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chang?
I'm wondering if Councilwoman Ashby could give me some background. And I know we've talked about this before, but it seems somewhat humorous to me that we have to ratify something that's affecting central Kitsap and the Silverdale UGA.
No, the...
Is that not what we're doing, or?
Well, yes, but the countywide planning policies are part of, help me, Nick, they're part of the KRCC and the overall comprehensive plans that we're all working on.
Yeah, it's based on an interlocal agreement between all of the agencies, so to amend it, it requires ratification.
It requires ratification by all of them. And we have talked about this at least two work studies that I can remember. Yeah.
Thank you. Any other, any more comments? All right, we'll be voting on 7B, adoption of resolution to ratify amendments to countywide planning policies. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Thank you, that motion carries. 7C, approval of contract with Kelly Imaging. And let's see, Clerk Reinsen, I believe that's yours.
Yes. So currently, the city has a lease with Kelly Imaging Systems for copier services in the administrative/finance, police, and court departments. The lease expires June 30th, 2015. The lease expires June 30, 2015. The city formed a committee in January with a representative from each department and the IT manager. The committee determined their department's copiers' needs, evaluated the level of customer service from our current vendor, reviewed their volume of copying, and reviewed the bids given by each vendor. In January, the city solicited three vendors from its small works roster for bids for copier services. In February, each department met with each vendor to discuss their copier needs. In March, each vendor was requested to provide a demonstration machine based on the needs of each department and be prepared to provide a bid in April. As scheduled, was set for all three vendors to bring in their machine. However, halfway through the process, the city was notified that Excel Business Systems that they respectfully declined to continue the participating in the bid process. In April, the committee met and discussed the pros and cons of each machine that was provided for demonstration and sought additional clarification from the vendors. In May, the committee reviewed the quotes and determined that Kelly Imaging System was the best fit for the city, expressing that service was one of the highest priorities. In this process, we learned that maintenance is basically an allowance of copies at a reduced copy charge rate. Not having maintenance doesn't affect the warranty of the machine, unlimited toner, or machine itself needing serviced. The bids received for a 36-month lease agreement are as follows. Pacific Office Automation for $1,104 per month for all three machines. Kelly Imaging Systems, $875.76 per month for all three machines. And as stated earlier, Excel Business Systems did not submit the bid. Staff recommends approval of the lease agreement with the Kelly Imaging Systems for copier services for the administrative, finance, police, and court departments.
I'd just like to point out that these types of contracts, like, you know, these form contracts, do not meet the requirements for me to be able to approve them as to form. If you'd like me to detail why, I can tell you that. But, you know, there are things in these form contracts. For instance, the fact that if you enter into a dispute with them, you have to go to their state in order to litigate that dispute. And here, it's Missouri. And, you know, I'm not licensed to practice in Missouri, and I would not be able to represent you if you did have a dispute and it went to Missouri. Things like that.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
Well, I was curious if you...
We have a motion to discuss this.
If you knew why their price went down. Was it the bidding process that encouraged them to bid lower?
I do not know why the price was so low, other than he told me that it was going off of the KCDA contract with the King County. I was going to look that up. But it's through the King County. And then Pacific Office Automation went through the WISCA contract.
So I'd like to go back to what you're saying, Ms. Morris. I'm not sure, but did we previously have three contracts? Are we under three contracts right now for each copier?
We have one contract for three machines, same vendor for three machines.
We're under one contract? No, I mean, right now, before we sign this, do we have a contract for each machine?
It's one contract for all three machines currently with Kelly Imaging Systems.
Okay.
I thought they were based in Kent and not Missouri.
Well, the representative is out of the Tacoma office. The lease that you, that the machine will be leased with is Toshiba Imaging, which is based out of Missouri. So once this contract, or if you were to choose Pacific Office Automation, whoever their leaseee is, which is, I think theirs is with Toshiba, you pay the leaseholder. So we're not paying Kelly Imaging, we're paying Toshiba or Konica. Those are the two different machines. You pay the leaseholder. That's just how these contracts work.
Wouldn't we be better off having a contract on each machine? So if something happens to any one machine, we're not impacting the other, you know, servicing contracts? I mean...
And the reason in 2009, when we did this agreement, they were all on separate agreements. And based on what we learned back then, it was easier for AP to have one contract, one invoice. So that's how we did it.
I could see why it'd be easier for them. I just wonder, would it be better for us?
He's broken it down. So once, so it's right now $1,104. It'd be the same thing. He would take three contracts and three invoices and send it for a total of $1,104, or $875.76, whichever one you do. So we can have three contracts, three invoices, and three lease payments. Or we can have one contract, one payment, and one invoice.
Are all the machines running well? Is everything running well? There's one in the court, apparently, and the police and...
As far as I know, the admin, the court, and the police department, their copying machines are running just fine.
Well, actually, now, we had demonstration times, right? They brought, there was a week, did they have a week?
Each vendor had a week.
Each vendor could bring in what they proposed to lease to us and operate it for a week. So it was a little tedious, those several weeks, because we had, everybody had to get used to a different machine for a short period of time. But we were able to at least test their service, yeah. I don't have a motion yet. We're in discussion. That's fine. We can discuss. But at some point, we do need a motion in a second.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Since we're discussing this, I guess I have a couple of questions. When I extrapolated this number out over the three-year contract, it seemed like we were paying somewhere in the neighborhood of about 20 grand apiece for copiers. Have we ever looked into what it would take just to buy and not do the lease?
I have not, but I know that IT would probably look into it. He purchases all of our equipment. And I know that right now, he's looking into purchasing more printers instead of copiers. But...
What if we bought out the contract and kept the, if you say they're running well, I can see what you had back there. But if they're running well, what if we bought out the contract and...
It's my understanding, I have to, I think if we were to purchase the machine, we have to go through a whole different process because of the value of the machine is more than the lease value. And maybe Carol can elaborate on that. It has to do with the, at the end of the, if you lease it, and then at the end of it, you can either purchase it at fair market value, or you can give it back, or you can do a month-to-month. And I think we're not allowed to do the purchase because it's a different process.
Do we know what the fair market value is?
You could come up and sit here, department.
I'm missing a chair.
I don't have a chair.
Oh, then you can't.
Okay, I just wanted to make a comment. Debbie Hahn, I'm the court administrator here. And the court has been with Kelly Imaging for 15 years. And the reason we stick to leasing rather than buying is because at the end of the three-year or four-year period, is ours a three-year?
Four.
Four-year, we get a new machine. And if you buy the machine, that's when everything starts falling apart. You need to, the maintenance would be much higher at that point. So the court has been leasing the machines for 15 years. Kelly provides the service that we need so that if they go down, they respond immediately. And that's why we've stuck with Kelly Imaging all these years. And so the court respectfully asks that you authorize this contract. At least buying it, it just leads to issues down the road and would be more expensive for the city in the long run.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for that, that point of view. Appreciate it.
Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Lawson.
I guess I still have, I don't know if we've ever done the calculation, Debbie, or not, but like I said, when you extrapolate this out over a three-year period, that's a whole lot of money for a copy machine to use for three years when you could buy a brand-new one, I think, for less, I think. I don't know. I'm not buying copiers every week.
Yes, I believe you can, but the maintenance at the end of the three years, we get new machines. So the machines are, they're not, maybe not brand-new, but they're fixed so that they are like brand-new. And we get new things with them, too. Each year, we've either added, like, scanning, we do color. When we first bought, when we first entered our first contract with them, it was black and white. We couldn't, if we'd have bought that machine, we would have been stuck with black and white for eternity because we purchased that. We wouldn't have been able to get a new one in three years. So each year, we add a feature.
My point is that for 20,000 bucks, you could throw it away. You'd probably pay less than throw it away in three years and buy another one. And you're not any further behind than you are with the lease. If you're going to spend 20 grand every three years because you're renewing a lease for a copier, wouldn't it be cheaper to buy one every three years? You get a new machine every three years.
That I don't know. I know that.
It just seemed like an awful lot of money that we're...
Maintenance is extremely expensive. If you have any problems with your machine, you'd have to have a maintenance contract with the provider. So that would be an additional cost.
Presumably, one year would be under warranty. But I just question, that's an odd amount of money for a copy machine.
One of the things to look at on the contract is, in the middle of the page, it talks about end-of-lease options, and you see how they've checked the box. FMW, purchase all but not less than all the equipment for the fair market value per paragraph one and two. And that was one of the concerns I had, was that the city would pay the $875.76 to Kelly for 36 months. And at the end of the term, the city's going to be required to buy the copiers for not less than fair market value. And so my comment was, if the city was going to proceed with this, then we should get Kelly to tell us what the copiers are worth right now so that we know that at the end of the term, we're not going to be paying more than a brand-new copier. And, and Randy can say this, she commented that, well, you go ahead and tell them.
Yeah, in the past, when the contracts were brought forward, we've always, from our previous legal counsel, had directed staff to cross that part out in case we can't have this option because of the process that we did to get the lease agreement. To purchase a copier, you have to go through a different process than leasing a copier. So we were always told to cross that off, both parties initial, and at the end of the year, we will either renew or give you a new one. Those are only the two options that we can do when we have a lease with a copier.
But that's not what was presented here.
Correct.
My, at least in, I don't know, copiers and automobiles are different. But when you lease an automobile, you know going into it that your residual value is X. It could be higher, but you're obligated to pay no more than that X number of X. I guess I wouldn't mind seeing some analysis to the, I appreciate what the court's saying that, you know, and I think their machine is probably not as high a volume as the one potentially in finance. That's a fairly big machine, if I've seen it there. And maybe all three of these scenarios require different needs. Have we done any needs analysis and what, where these machines are at in their useful life? Maybe we want to buy what we have, or one of these, or two of these at further residual value, and buy a maintenance contract. And maybe, as Debbie's saying, the court's one is worn out, and it makes sense to buy or lease another one. So I'm...
Debbie, finances?
I'm not sure.
Well, I, I just want to say, John, I'm not sure whether my math is correct, or if your math is correct.
You're the banker. I'll take your math over mine, so...
But I'm getting it closer to 32,000.
What I came up with, too.
Rather than 20, it's closer to 32,000.
Still a lot of money.
But that is, but that 32,000 is only the lease of the machine. It is not the maintenance. The actual cost, when you add the maintenance in, is $1,609 a month. So, so that times 36 is your actual...
Yeah. Seems like a lot of money for, I don't know, like I said, I don't buy copy machines, so I'm not sure. But it just, maybe it's sticker shock. It seems like an awful lot of money we're paying for a copy machine.
I'd be for getting some additional information, what they're worth, what a new one would be, whether it would make sense to keep one and lease one and buy one. I mean, I don't know, but let's find out.
Could we get a maintenance agreement on the machine if we were to purchase it?
Sure.
Then that resolves your question, Debbie, about maintaining it, so...
No idea.
Good question.
Ask the vendor.
What the residual value of those machines are currently, just to get us an idea of, seems like we bought this machine three or four times over the last three years.
So the value at the end of the three years and what a new machine, what new machine's going to cost if we were to purchase it outright would also be handy?
And I think backing up one more step, what is the value of the machines that we have? Do we want to...
Well, that's what I mean. What are they worth now if we were to purchase them and enter into a completely different agreement to where...
A maintenance agreement for our current machines look like? What would that cost?
Now, because this is, there's two bidders, we'd have to extend the same questions to both of them. That's correct, or...
Well, not necessarily.
I'd have to speak to legal counsel because I'm not quite sure, based on what I was told by previous legal counsel, is you can't purchase machines now. You have to go through a different process. But I guess Carol and I will look into that, and in the meantime, we'll do the analysis that's been directed by the council and bring it back.
Right. Because even if, excuse me, even if we don't purchase these, what I'm hearing from council is we want an analysis of leasing for the next three years or purchasing.
Leasing, I'm assuming with the current vendor now, with a maintenance agreement.
Or purchasing what we have.
Or purchase, so there's three scenarios. Purchasing what we have with a maintenance agreement, purchasing the proposed equipment, and then the lease that was brought forward.
And I actually, I'm sorry, I actually heard one more alternative, which was purchase the best of the used ones and put it in a location that's not very demanding at this point in time.
We could figure that out.
Or a combination. That's, I think that's...
No, I was, my question was, maybe, and I don't know, I mean, maybe the court's machine is wore out, and we just absolutely have to lease or buy a new one for them. Is the police or clerk's office, where are they at in their useful life? I'd just like some analysis. I'm not proposing moving machines anywhere because I think their machines are probably sized to what their activity is.
Clerk's office will fit in the police or the court.
We're not suggesting moving it.
Please, please, we can swap it.
I'm not suggesting moving them at all. It's just analyzing what's there. Is it wore out or not? And if it's wore out, then we should probably be looking at buying or leasing a new one. If it's not, do we want to buy it and buy maintenance contracts?
Right. Because when you include the maintenance, it's going to cost us over three years, over $60,000.
For what's here? For all three. So that is 20,000. That's why it's over 20 grand apiece.
Okay. That's how you, okay. And I was doing annually.
So I'm just a...
A little bit behind the banker, but close.
We haven't made a motion yet. Do we want to move this forward?
No, this is probably the best way to do it. We're discussing, we're, and then we won't have a motion to table or anything.
There's no action.
So that's the way I think. Did you have your hand up over there, Mr. Dorsey?
Yeah, I'm just a stupid engineer, and I'm very linear. I think there's one key value that's not being introduced in this conversation, which is when a copier goes down, and we've had copiers go down, everything comes to a halt. And so you have people that are being paid, you know, a lot of money per hour, sitting around, that they're stuck and they're not functional and they're not efficient. And if, one of the key components in this conversation is that we're getting a reliable piece of equipment that can be immediately fixed and replaced. I mean, you're going to, you're going to, it's like stepping over dollars to save dimes. And I'm really concerned that whatever we do, we don't end up with, you know, a rehab piece of equipment that's constantly down. Because now you're just compounding the city's already tremendous workload. You know, you put that back 10 minutes, and suddenly it compounds through the day. So, you know, I'm just, said my piece.
Good point. Very good point. I mean, we don't want an antiquated piece of equipment.
No, but that doesn't make any difference with the lease or the buy.
So let's get the answers to our questions, and we'll take it up again.
Yeah, we got three of them in this building. So if one goes down, it's our wellness program.
That's a good point, but I'm not sure they talk to each other very well, from one department to another. I mean, you know...
Then what we'll do, Debbie just mentioned to me, is to, as part of the analysis, is that these machines also included the ability to incorporate our fax machine. So the finance and the admin machine right now, fax is on its list.
So, the finance and the admin machine right now, fax is on its last leg, and so we were able to hopefully get rid of the fax machine and incorporate it into the new copier. And, the court was also planning on doing that. So, what we'll do is, we'll take the analysis that's all been talked about, and if we were to buy the current machine with the maintenance, we'll also ask how much it's gonna cost to get a new copier fax machine, or incorporate the fax into the current machine, so...
Your current copier scanners don't have fax capabilities, but within them?
They have them, but they're not incorporated in it. Right now, they're two separate units.
A three-year-old...these are three-year-old machines?
Absolutely, yeah.
Had to purchase that.
Yeah, in 2009, from...I wasn't...I was in the office, but I wasn't in part of the contract. But, it's my understanding, in 2009, when it was originally proposed to the finance and to the court, there was an additional charge, and it was not feasible to incorporate that into the lease agreement at the time. So, they...both departments declined to have it, and just keep it as business as usual. And, this quote came around, and they've included it, so...
Yeah, Public Works Planning has...
Yeah, Public Works and Planning, with their last machine upgrade, they incorporated it.
Yeah, we have, we don't have a fax machine anymore.
I guess, at least in my industry, we used the fax machine a ton 10 years ago. I...gosh, I don't see a fax very often anymore at all, everything's...
Well, the admin and the finance department, when there's an advertisement, we get...we probably go through three reams of paper within that week-to-two-week timeframe, just on applications alone. They literally fax it the last minute on the day that it's due. So, our machine itself, I can't explain how much the court does on their fax machine, but I know the admin, finance department, we use that fax machine a lot.
I just had Nick Bond ask me what a fax machine was.
Exactly.
And, I was gonna harness my inner Alan and ask you what fax stands for, the three letters.
So, but we'll pull the analysis off of the fax machine, just like we do the copier. We can give a per-page count on the fax machine, the copier, and get some numbers for you.
Okay.
Is that...and then, all right, very good. We'll come back with some numbers. Okay, we'll move on then to reports of council committees. Finance Committee, Mr. Clausen.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I had a conflict with the June 3 meeting, so I talked to the treasurer, and Jerry, I didn't talk to you, Rob, about rescheduling that third. Everybody but you is available that evening at 5:00. Can we do it then?
On the 3rd?
On the 3rd?
Yes.
We'll change it to June 3 at 5:00 PM and do it here at City Hall.
Okay, that's been changed. And, Public Property, Mr. Cartwright.
Our next meeting will be June 8, 8:30 here at City Hall.
Okay. Economic Development, Ms. Ashby.
And our next meeting will be June 8, directly following the Public Properties meeting.
Utility Sewer Advisory, Mr. Patansu.
We haven't met since our last meeting, and the dates for the next sewer advisory and utility are both on the agenda.
Mr. Chang?
Nothing to report for lodging tax.
Ms. Lucarelli, Chimes and Lights?
Nothing to report.
Okay, thank you. I will announce that we have a work-study session, June 16, Town Hall meeting, July 16, and a planning, 125th Anniversary Committee Planning Meeting, June 8. And, they're all three here at City Hall. Okay. Let's see here. My report. First thing is some good news, I like to read good news. I'll read a letter to you. "To whom it may concern, please know that we are pleasantly surprised and completely satisfied with the service provided by your group." Group being Port Orchard. "Especially your sewer person, Tony Lang, and contractors..."well, including some subcontractors, "and contractors during the recent septic grinder pump installation between 11 and 20th May 2015. Tony explained what would occur before the contractor came. He checked the contractor's work every day after they left. The two Hemley's people were very polite and explained all they were doing, and they will tell you, and I...and they will tell you, I asked lots of questions. I said the same about Georgia's electrician who rewired things. They were all professional. I wish I could say..."oh, I better not read this about a state inspector, we'll just skip that part. "I'm glad we live in Port Orchard that has an excellent public works department." And, so I'm gonna keep this letter, along with all those other letters I read, and I'm very proud of Public Works Department, once again. I just wanted to give you a little quick highlight of just an average weekend in Port Orchard. Actually, maybe it was a little better than average. Saturday, it was my pleasure to be a tour guide for about 100 folks, friends of Debbie Maycomb's, that were here staging to go on a Stitch and Sale program. So, she asked me if I'd go on the tour twice and show them, AKA Cedar Cove City of Port Orchard, and I was proud and happy to do so. We had a lot of fun. And, in between, I was down at the Farmer's Market and Fathoms of Fun Pirates Rendezvous, which was also a lot of fun. And, the thing that I enjoyed most was the little kids interacting with all the pirates down there. It seemed like this year was better than the other years, because I didn't see any frightened little children this year. They're...I guess the pirates weren't as scary, or the little children were a little more, you know, comfortable, but they had a lot of fun. There was a lot of fun going on down there, so... Anyway, on Sunday, I participated in the Fathoms of Fun Seagull Splat Run, and I came in at my personal best. I was pretty much one of the last ones to finish, but I actually finished this year, and that, to me, was a big deal. So, that was a lot of fun. This year, we had about 100 registries, people registered, and last year, they had about 70, so there was 30 additional folks. There was still those smart, elegant, young people that got in there at about 17, 18 minutes for that full 5K run, and then there was the rest of us. But, anyhow, it was a lot of fun, a lot of people were splattered with seagull pastry stuff, and anyway, it was a lot of fun. After that, Port Orchard Chamber did a seagull wings contest, and they're not here tonight, but Matt Murphy worked hard, along with his whole crew, the Chamber crew, to provide all the equipment, all the tables, and all the cover for the seagull wings contest, and then they did a lot. I've always wanted to be one of the judges for the wings contest, but I've never been, so one of these days, maybe I'll get selected. But, the commercial class, first place, went to everybody's American Cookhouse here in Port Orchard. Second place went to Red Dog Saloon here in Port Orchard, and third place went to Famous Dave's from Silverdale. In the amateur class, there was a group called the Wingmasters, got number one. And then, the one I really like always is People's Choice, because we get to vote on that, and that was our own Port Orchard's Lighthouse, was People's Choice. So, that was very fun. That was very good. Let's see. "I was lucky enough to be chosen to be Master of Ceremonies in the evening at Miller Woodlawn Cemetery, and the...we recognized especially all veterans, of course, and especially World War II veterans that night, and it was a very, very moving memorial evening, day before memorial evening presentation or ceremony. So, I was tickled that Port Orchard was included." I attended...on Monday, I attended the program at Retsal Veterans Home, and they have a really unique remembrance of veterans. They have a roll call of all their veterans that have passed in the last year, and it's very moving, and they read the names, and unfortunately, there was 84 names that were read that day. Finally, I attended the Sunset Lane Memorial Tribute, and that was hosted by veterans of foreign wars post 2669 and American Legion post 30. All in all, it was just a wonderful weekend in Port Orchard, and if you don't believe me, we have almost similar, but not the same, things going on every weekend this summer, so just come down, you'll be surprised. And, that's my report. Okay, let's see. Let me see, I'm trying to find my place here. Reports of Department Heads, Mr. Dorsey.
Yes, thank you. Just a reminder that we're working on the Bethel Corridor. This week, we're doing the sidewalk work, which is day work. So, if you don't need to go through the area, if you're just passing through, I would avoid the area. And then, next week, sometime next week, we should be starting the evening work. And, then again, if you...obviously, if you're going to the area, you need to go plan extra time. If you're just passing through and you can find an alternate route, then I would do so.
Thank you. Mr. Martin?
Not tonight, Mayor.
Okay. Mr. Bond?
Just a reminder, in your off week, you have the Impact Fee and Concurrent Ordinance, and it's very exciting reading, and I hope that you're all studying up on it.
Thank you. Ms. Morris?
No report tonight.
Ms. Reinsen?
I have a question.
All right, well, that takes care of all our Department Head reports. Citizen comments. Once again, no one was signed up, but if you do have comments, please raise your hand to be recognized and make your comments. Seeing no one with their hand raised, we'll move on then. The last thing on our agenda is an executive session, and the council, it's...we put on the agenda 30 minutes, executive session regarding potential litigation pursuant to RCW 4230, 110, 1, and I. And, no action will be taken at the end of this, but we'll go ahead, and I propose that we take five...whoops, excuse me.
I didn't mean to interrupt you, but we're gonna have two different executive sessions. The first one is gonna be on pending litigation for 30 minutes, and the second one is on potential litigation for 10 minutes.
Okay. And, the RCWs are...
Same RCW.
Same RCW, okay. So, do we have to come back and then go into the second one, or...
You're gonna have a change of attorneys, so...
Okay, so we have to come back out, or I'll come back out and change attorneys, so...okay. But, I did wanna say, should we take five minutes and take a short break, and then go into executive session? So, let's take five minutes.